It is seven o'clock. We are now calling a March 8th regular town council meeting to order. Johnny, if you will start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now moving on to presentations and recognitions. Joe, you'll go to the front. Eugene, would you like to join? Do you have stuff going up, Gene? Just get public color. Kathy. Kathy, will you skip public color?
Uh, no, first.
As some of you may or may not remember, back in our big storm in January, this nice gentleman here, Gene Kerouac, went out there and did over 100 driveways for people who could not do them themselves, the elderly, disabled, veterans. And in this time of day, it was something I really took to heart when I saw the article and really resonated with me, how he's out there helping others, just like all of us do at certain times. And I figured, we've got to give you this a little bit of a big thank you. So, the Good Samaritan Award is given to Farmington residents who exemplify extraordinary concern for others, especially those who are most in need. Today, we're honoring Farmington resident Eugene Kerouac for his selfless act of kindness. In January, Connecticut was hit with a nor'easter and some parts of the state saw up to two feet of snow. That's when Eugene stepped up to help. With a plow ready to go and free time, Eugene posted on Facebook that he was looking for folks who may need a hand helping dig it out from the snow. His Facebook post read, "Morning. Any homeowner who is elderly, disabled, or on a fixed income, call me. I'm snow plowing for free and want to be assistance to you." That week, Eugene plowed over 100 driveways for folks who are elderly, disabled, or have special needs, all for free. Residents like Eugene embody the spirit of what means to live in Farmington and that what makes our town a great place to live, work, play, and prosper. On behalf of the town council, I want to thank you for your diligent work and your help for our community. So we got you a little.
Is that some vision?
And a little hat.
No, I'm good. All right, got it.
Ed walked me through.
Okay, big smiles.
Right up there. Thanks, Gene. Thank you, brother.
Kind of nice to start before we get into the heat of the budget with something nice and having our Good Citizen Award. So thank you, Gene, for giving us that moment before we get into the budget. We will now be moving on to item D. Joe?
Yes, item D, make a motion for a public hearing on the Town Manager's 2022-2023 Recommended Operating Budget.
Second.
And Maureen, if you'll read the legal notice.
The legal notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Manager's 2022-2023 Recommended Budget dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 22nd day of February, 2022. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Motion second. Kathy?
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Blonsky, Town Manager. Farmington Town Council and members of the public, I present for your review the Town Manager's Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2223. The Town Council's budget target, the town's strategic plan, the town's capital improvement policy, and our long-term financial forecast were the policy guidelines at the forefront when formulating this budget. This budget is a maintenance budget that maintains our current high level of services and increases our capital funding levels. I will now review the Town Manager's Recommended Budget. The general fund budget includes the proposed spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The proposed budget for Westwood's golf course, the recreation fund, and the solid waste collection and disposal are also included. The budget is broken down into three categories: expenditures, grand list, and revenues, which are used to develop a tax rate. Expenditures. I will now review the expenditure portion of the budget. The total proposed budget for the fiscal year 2223 is $121,88,233, an increase of $4,987,703, or 4.30% above the current budget. Overall, this budget is a maintenance budget with no or very limited expansion of town services. Typically, our operating budget has various drivers that increase expenditures. This year, there is not one specific budget driver that has increased expenditures. That said, inflation, international affairs, and COVID-19 supply chain issues are still a concern. In addition, the 2122 budget included an additional pay period, which increased the personnel budget base. This additional pay period did not have to be included in this year's budget, which enabled me to meet the town council's budget target. Town operations. The Town Manager's Recommended Budget is $33,202,320, an increase of $885,237, or 2.74% above current expenditures. In our different categories, general administration went up 0.26%. Public safety went up 2.47%. Public works went up 4.82%. Community and recreation, 3.11%. And the other category is 4.06%, for a total of 2.74% on the expenditure side. Highlights of the town budget include the following. Personnel costs included 27 pay periods in 2122 budget. The budget includes 26 pay periods, which resulted in a significant reduction in personnel accounts. I am recommending that the Farmington Library contribution at $2,837,235, which is a 2.74% increase above current levels. The police fleet account includes funding for three new 24-hour patrol vehicles. The development wing has been restructured with additional staffing. A part-time secretary in the fire marshal's office has been increased to a full-time position, and a part-time building official position has been increased to a full-time position. The highway and grounds operation shows funding for four seasonal summer employees who will be used to supplement regular staff. A part-time dial-a-ride driver position in community recreation services has been increased to a full-time position. The pension account has been increased due to a reduction in the assumed rate of return on pension investments from 6.875% to 6.75%. This is based on the recommendation of the retirement board. The health insurance account has increased 7.8% due to projected higher claims. Overall, utilities have increased 5.46%, with gasoline and diesel increasing 19.13%. Equipment is up 11.07% due to increased cost to purchase new police vehicles and the equipment needed to outfit them. The Farmington Valley Health District increased 14.94% due to Farmington's population increase and per capita rate increase. The town will realize savings in many cellphone accounts due to a change in our cellphone service provider. Now I'll review town expenditure by object. I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increases for each of the object are as follows. The salaries increased 1.97%. Benefits increased 4.32%. Supplies increased 4.93%. Equipment increased 11.07%. Contractual increased 0.84%. Utilities increased 5.46% for a total increase of 2.74%. The recommended total town general fund appropriation is $33,202,320, which is a 2.74% increase above the current budget. The debt service group of accounts is recommended to increase by $1,34,309, or 12.5%. This group of account includes funds to pay for the lease financing obligations, clean water, fund loan repayments, and the principal interest due on existing debt. Also included in this account is a new debt service payment of $40 million bond issue that took place on February 23rd, 2022. The $40 million issue has a term of 20 years. Most of the bonds, $37.2 million, will be used to finance the construction of the new Farmington High School. The remainder of the issue will finance land acquisition, road improvements, and elementary school improvement projects. The bonds are rated AAA by Moody's Rating Service. Special services. The refuse collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill operation. This budget proposes a rate increase of $18. The annual fee will be $272 per household. Capital improvements. The proposed general fund appropriation to support the first year of the capital improvement plan is $3,881,000. This is above what we have historically been funding for capital projects. Since 2005, through the town's capital improvement policy, our capital plan strives to contribute at least 2.5% of the general fund revenues to the capital budget each year. With a cash appropriation of $3,881,000, the recommended capital budget contribution would be at 3.2% of general fund revenues in fiscal year 2223. Shown on the screen is the complete Board of Education and Town capital projects. Proposed bonding. I'm not proposing any bonding this year. It should be noted that the Board of Education proposed capital budget included funding for two large ventilation projects in the school this year and an additional two ventilation projects the following year. I am recommending that all four of these projects be bonded together next year. Expenditure summary. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 is $121,88,233, an increase of $4,987,033, or 4.30% above the current budget. I will now call on Kathy Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to present the Board of Education budget.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present the Board of Education's 2022-2023 Recommended Budget to the Town Council and our community. The budget development process in Farmington is grounded in our strategic improvement documents each year, our mission, our vision of the global citizen, our instructional model, which is our framework for teaching and learning, core beliefs, our theory of action, and our equity framework. This alignment is critical because our financial plan must advance the implementation of these core improvement documents. From initial school submissions to the refinement of our operating budget through school and program reviews of all requests, zero-based budgeting practices were utilized. In addition, we were mindful and very thoughtful about the need to offset costs in this budget due to federal S.R. III ARP grant funding in the coming fiscal year. With our core improvement documents at the forefront of the development of this operating budget, here are some of the major messages of the 2022-2023 budget. The Board of Education's Recommended Budget maintains and advances academic excellence through innovative programming pre-K through 12th grade, promotes innovation in student-centered teaching and learning, advances programming and resources aligned to the district's equity framework, supports students' academic and social-emotional development, especially due to the impact the pandemic has had in these two areas, moves and/or reinstates much-needed personnel, academic supplies, facility projects, programming, and technology off of grants and onto the operating budget, some of which were reduced in the 2021-2022 budget. It also factors in S.R. funding to offset costs to mitigate the overall increase in our operating budget, contains costs through zero-based budgeting, reductions, and efficiencies to maintain and advance current programming, and maintains class size levels in accordance with Board of Education policy. This slide provides an overview of the Recommended Operating Budget for the 2022-2023 school year of $74,448,257, with an increase of $2,159,323, or a percent increase over the 2021-2022 budget of 2.99%. This slide shows the school district's commitment to not only educational excellence, but also fiscal responsibility. The rankings listed on this slide are statewide, including all school districts, with 1 spending the most and 166 spending the least. It is important to note that Farmington ranks 106 in the most up-to-date per pupil expenditure reported by the Connecticut State Department of Education as compared to all other Connecticut school districts, which is $1,918 less per pupil than the state per pupil average. This year, if our per pupil expenditure was the same as the state average, our budget would be over $7.7 million more. As highlighted on this slide, we continue to exhibit exemplary fiscal management as compared to other Connecticut school districts, including those we most compare ourselves to. The first budget driver is salaries, which accounts for 66% of the total budget. The budget increase in the salary line is 3.46% and reflects all negotiated contractual obligations. The series reflects our association's salary increases for the coming year, which are all highlighted on this slide. The next budget driver is benefits, which accounts for 16.4% of the total budget. There is a 0.93% increase in benefits. The account provides 100% of expected paid claims and the administration of employee health insurance. All associations have a high deductible HSA with coinsurance. Life insurance and long-term disability costs are also highlighted on this slide. Services is the next budget driver and accounts for 14.2% of the total budget. There is an increase of 2.46% in the services series. This account provides for special services consultation and tuition costs for outplacements. The account also provides for major facility projects, K-8 summer school, and technology-based operational systems. Some facility projects were reduced in the 2021-2022 budget and are being reinstated in the coming fiscal year. The account includes costs for student transportation and includes professional development programs for continuous improvement in teaching and learning. The next series is supplies, which accounts for 2.6% of the total budget. The supply series reflects a 3.98% increase. The account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions and provides for the purchase of a wide-ranging group of supplies, such as instructional, health, custodial, computer, and testing supplies, text, and library books, and AV computer materials. This series also experienced reductions in the 2021-2022 budget and reflects a reinstatement of much-needed funding for supplies in the coming year. The equipment series reflects an increase of 30.25%. This series accounts for 0.5% of the total budget. The account provides for facility and technology equipment. This series also experienced reductions in the 2021-2022 budget and reflects a reinstatement of funding. The major driver of this increase is the restoration of funding for technology equipment related to the district's full transition to take-home one-to-one devices. Dues and fees are the 600 series, shows a negative 2.53% decrease, and this account reflects 0.3% of the total budget. This series includes memberships in organizations that support our strategic improvement efforts. This account also includes Town of Farmington's negotiated liability, umbrella, and motor vehicle insurance for the school district. The reduction in this account is due to movement of Aspire funds into the correct supply account. Here is a view of the entire Board of Education's Recommended Operating Budget, all of which I've reviewed within this budget presentation. In summary, the 2022-2023 Board of Education's Recommended Budget advances educational excellence, equity, student well-being, innovative teaching and learning, and acceleration of learning, all aligned to our vision of the global citizen. The budget is responsive to our students' needs, especially given the impact the pandemic has and continues to have in the areas of academic progress and social-emotional well-being. The budget also reflects a reinstatement and/or the moving off of grants of much-needed facility projects, personnel, supplies, technology, and other areas of the budget, some of which were reduced in the 2021-2022 budget. Even with the many challenges that we have and continue to face due to the pandemic, Farmington continues to lead the way in excellence in education and operations due to strong and thoughtful strategic planning that is supported by our annual financial plan, this operating budget. We have much to be proud of, our faculty, staff, administrators, and families, along with all of you. Our Town Council and our Board of Education have joined together to ensure our students here in Farmington continue to be provided a world-class education during a complex and ever-evolving global pandemic. Many districts are facing larger budget increases in the coming year. Given the collaborative budget development and approval process that has occurred over many years, Farmington was well-positioned to address the challenges that the pandemic presented due to the strategic work we've done over time, along with a financial plan that supports these efforts in the following areas: a student-centered instructional model aligned to our vision of the global citizen and before that, our vision of the graduate; regular program reviews to remain on the cutting edge of educational research and best practices; comprehensive mental health programming and support throughout our district; tiered interventions to accelerate learning; assessment for learning through a mastery-based learning approach; job-embedded professional development aligned to our visionary core improvement documents; a forward-thinking approach to technology, infrastructure, and one-to-one devices; K-12 facility reviews, planning, and successful implementation of facility recommendations. Given this focus, for over a decade, in collaboration with our Board of Education and Town Council, this approach contributed to a budget in 2022-2023 that is both responsive to our students' needs and responsible to the taxpayers of Farmington. The fiscal information presented and the reported district and student achievement results represent a value-added approach to strategic planning, improvement, and budget development. At all times, our strategic improvement efforts and our financial plan are centered upon our students, their needs, and their future as self-aware individuals, empowered learners, disciplined thinkers, engaged collaborators, and civic-minded contributors. I will now shift to the Board of Education's Capital Improvement Budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. On February 22nd, Assistant Superintendent Alicia Bowman provided a detailed presentation of our capital budget to the Town Council and our community. We also had time to answer questions from the Town Council related to our capital improvement requests. This slide provides an overview of the Board of Education's capital budget requests for the coming fiscal year. Our long-range K-8 facility review, our K-12 security recommendations, equipment replacement schedule, as well as custodial input are used to create our seven-year capital plan with updates to that plan each budget cycle. This slide represents our request for the coming fiscal year for 2022-2023 for a total capital improvement request of $3,587,000. This last slide provides an overview of our seven-year capital improvement plan, which represents a long-term view of both our short- and long-term capital improvement projects. I want to thank you for your attention to the Board of Education's 2022-2023 operating and capital budget requests. We look forward to answering questions that you may have as we proceed through the budget approval process. Thank you. The grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a 0.21% increase. The personal property account shows a 2.51% decrease. And the motor vehicle account shows a 25.22% increase. In summary, the grand list increased by 1.72%, or $64,395,241, for a total grand list of $3,797,616,699. Some areas to note: motor vehicles increased 25.22%. Overall, we've seen an increase in the value of cars in Farmington. This is a considerable growth, and it's driven the overall increase of the grand list. Revenues. I've broken revenues down into eight categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, and Westwood's contribution. In summary, projected non-tax revenues are $11,417,520, or an increase of 18.48%. Some areas to note: state and federal grants have substantially increased from last year. The town received an additional $1,640,533 in pilot funds from the state of Connecticut. Charges for service revenue is expected to increase due to the strong real estate market. The Town Clerk's Office has been able to collect a significant amount of revenue from the conveyance, tax, and recording fees. Other revenue includes payment from the other major users of the wastewater treatment plant. These payments represent their share of the cost of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project completed in 2020. These payments will be less each year based on the 20-year payment schedule. Recommended tax and mill rate. The recommended general fund budget will require a property tax rate of $29.28 mils, an increase of 0.47 mils, or a 1.63% tax increase, or $106.56 yearly increase for the average homeowner. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,928 in taxes. The annual town meeting is April 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the Farmington High School Auditorium. Members of the public will have an option of attending in person or virtually over Zoom. However, only those attending the meeting in person will be able to ask questions. The town-wide referendum is Thursday, April 28th, at your usual polling place. And also, we'll be meeting this Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, Wednesday and Thursday at 4:00 PM, and at Saturday at 9:00 o'clock to go over the details of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And the process with our public hearing is the council will have the opportunity to ask questions over the ensuing days when we give each one of these items in greater detail. So that's the point you hear from your council. At this point, I would open it up to the public if they have any questions on this presentation only. We will have a later public comment area. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak, please state your name, your address, and try and keep your comments to five minutes if you will. Seeing no members of the public here. Do we have anyone online?
No hands raised online.
Okay, no hands raised online. We will then close the public hearing and move on to new items, which we have none. We will now move to item D, public comment. This would be general public comment. Any members of the public who wish to speak on any subject whatsoever, please feel free to do so. For our public here, you may step up to the deus and ask any questions. Again, state your name, address, and please keep your comments to five minutes. Seeing none in the room here. Do we have any public comments online? Also none online, so we will move right along. Now, reading of the minutes. Joseph?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the February 8th, 2022, regular Town Council meeting to approve the minutes of the meeting.
Second. We have a motion of second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the February 22nd, 2022, regular Town Council meeting.
Second. Have a motion of second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next, we move on to item H, reading of communications and written appeals. Do we have any? Having no written communications or appeals. We will go on to item I, 1928 Building An-hoc Committee. Johnny?
So, we've had a series of meetings to kind of get the timeline down. Although nothing is needed right away, we Although nothing is needed right away, we do recommend to the Town Council to proceed with an online public opinion survey, basically trying to get the pulse of the town on some of these higher-level ideas before we enact a full committee with a charge, basically a better fact-finding. So we're recommending to the council tonight to give the committee the ability to move forward with public opinion survey.
Great. Any questions?
Just curious to, did you guys discuss how you would distribute the or get people engaged in answering the questions on the survey?
Yes, we had a pretty good meeting with the survey company, who's got a lot of experience. And this is the same survey company, correct me if I'm wrong, that we used for the prior surveys. Not enough time to go to a mail-out survey, would be an online-only survey, but they gave us many examples of really good results, number of people, and they laid out a bunch of avenues to make sure that we get proper cross-section, because not just those that are online, but through mentioning in the newsletters, ways to call in and get it, et cetera. There are many avenues to make sure that we get every type of citizen that's in Farmington, get in front of every type of citizen.
And when would that be prepared to go out approximately?
Upon recommendation, I think we'd be doing it almost immediately.
But there's another meeting later this week, so if there's approval of this council, then they want to start right away.
Right.
Very good. Thanks.
Other question? And just to comment again, this is sort of our first step in this. We're going about this the same way we went about the high school building project itself. We're trying to get the input from the public. And as Johnny mentioned, we're looking for a cross-section of the public. Through the online survey, we can track and make sure with different questions they're asking that we are getting just that. So due to the time limitations, last time we were available to do the phone survey. And it's not just time limitations now, unfortunately. It's also a limit of people who are willing to do phone surveys. Like with everything else, it's tough to find people to hire to do those surveys. So the survey companies have been backlogged a bit. So what we're looking for here is just an approval to let the 1928 Building Committee run the survey. So I'll just take a poll.
Actually, just one other question. Is it available online, or is it also going to be available in print somewhere for someone who doesn't have access to the internet?
Both.
Okay.
And also, if I could just add, there are some safeguards in place to make sure that there's only, you know, one vote per IP address, that someone's not going in there, and there's also safeguards for out-of-town people voting, et cetera. So they felt fairly confident that they could control that to make sure that we have an accurate count at the end.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Is there anyone opposed to doing the survey? Okay, everyone in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sounds like we've got consensus, Johnny. Thank you. Item two, the American Rescue Plan, ARPA. Kathy, I will turn that over to you.
We have an agenda item, so why don't we talk about it during the agenda item?
Excellent, that's N3.
Okay.
Okay, the Farmington High School Building Committee.
All right. I'm going to run through a couple of just kind of bookkeeping items. The last meeting we had last Wednesday, we approved, we voted to approve both the code review RFQ and rating forms. We also voted to approve the structural peer review RFQ and the rating form. We've canceled our next meeting on the 16th, and we'll be meeting again on March 30th at 5:00. The meetings are in person or available by Zoom. They're in person at the Farmington High School Library. One item I wanted to bring up was there was some discussion about the Office of State Traffic Control and basically DOT approval. Our professional partners basically laid out for us a timetable of when the DOT can actually take a look at this, and they cannot actually put it even in the docket until we have local approvals. That being said, seeing that, you know, we get potential local approvals over the next month, it gives us about five or six months to get through that process. But as you can imagine, with the pandemic and the closure of offices, there's been a backlog, not just in this agency, but in many others. So I'm just putting it out today that, you know, this is one of those things that if the OSTA review takes long, it could jeopardize our start date, which could be tough for the building of the high school. So I don't know at this point if that's, you know, being new to the council, I don't know if this is something that we could put a letter to our representatives, because I think through the council and then through our representatives, maybe a letter through the town manager's office, that we could just put our representatives on notice that we may need help with this, or at least it's on their radar, because we don't want to, you know, get tripped up over something as simple as, you know, gets put underneath the pile and no one gets to it, and we have, you know, one of the most largest major construction projects in Farmington's history, and we start late because of it.
Do we have consensus to have Kathy write a letter on behalf of the Town Council? Good. Okay, Kathy, could you put something?
Yep.
Okay, the other one was, there's been a lot of, obviously, talk about the reimbursement and some of the current news articles about the Office of School Construction Grants and some of the issues going on there. And obviously, we're all aware of the issues on the 900 wing and the reimbursements and the change in reimbursement rate from what was promised to us during the process and now what we're seeing, et cetera. Knowing that Farmington's a town, and obviously, we just heard a presentation, that we're in good standing, there is precedent to change the reimbursement rate. And I'm not sure that we would get in there and get some double-digit increases like I've seen in other towns. The city of Torrington, just back in June, went to the legislators, and they were able to pass a double-digit percent increase. And there's a lot more that goes with that story. I won't get into that, because I don't have all the exact details. That being said, I don't see why Farmington, through its legislators, could not ask for reimbursement rate, at least to the projected new one. And we brought this up at the last high school building committee. I pushed the partners on, you know, how it works, et cetera. The basic answer is, you know, that you get the reimbursement rate that's in your referendum year. And I can understand that, that's just the way the rules are done. But in reading some of the stories and following up a little bit, there was an act passed, you know, an emergency certification act, in part for the city of Torrington, saying that due to uprising, construction costs, and some of the things that were going on, that was just part of the puzzle. I don't see why Farmington would be in any other boat. We've seen major increases in steel construction materials, construction materials already. We've had to value engineer quite a bit. And what I guess I would be asking, and I know, again, being new to the council, I don't know if there's any way that we could put a formal request to our representatives to see if there's any way that they could replicate this through some kind of legislative, you know, emergency certification, to at least consider taking our reimbursement rate from the 18.93% that we had last year during the referendum to the new proposed reimbursement rate that's already out for this year, which is 19.64%. I know 0.71% doesn't sound like a lot, but on a $100 million project, that's $710,000. And, you know, being in a lot of those value engineering meetings with the subgroups, that's the difference between, I use the example, putting VCT, which requires, you know, yearly maintenance and polishing and buffing, and then putting porcelain tile, which we wouldn't have to touch for 20 years. Again, in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't sound like a lot, but, you know, when, you know, we're getting as low of a reimbursement rate as Farmington gets, every penny counts. And I wanted to see if we could put a letter together requesting that formally from our representatives to see if there's an avenue to somewhat replicate that on our behalf.
Kathy, what would you recommend?
Yeah, I would say that definitely, maybe our letter would be twofold. One is trying to get a status report about where we stand on the 900 wing and the change of the rate, so get a status, because I know that they are working hard on that. And then also, the second point is seeing if we could at least get that 18.9 to the 19.64 and put that together into a letter to all of our representatives.
Okay.
I can do that on behalf of the council.
Perfect.
And just to put it in perspective, I mean, we're talking about trying to go from 18.93 to 19.64. For those who've been following the articles in the paper, Hartford is getting 95%. New Britain Auto Middle School is getting 95%. I'm not sure what Torrington was, but we're paying the vast majority of this out of our bonding and tax issues, so I would think this wouldn't be too big of an ask for the state. The dollars are fairly minimal compared to the dollars they're putting out for other schools throughout the state.
And the number we're aiming for is something that's already been published as a reimbursement rate for Farmington in this fiscal year, so it's not a big ask to just see if we can make that small jump.
Okay, thank you. The Green Efforts Committee. Back to you again, Johnny.
All right. Green Efforts, we had a meeting on March 1st. We continue to discuss the anti-idling at the schools and some signage that we're discussing putting up in the next month or two. We've continued to discuss composting, and the staff over the next few months will be looking at if opportunities or any other towns that we could talk to gather all the information in case we do run into issues with transfer stations closing that. Hopefully, Farmington's ready with another solution if we can. Cleanup Day for 2022 is going to be on April 23rd at IAR, and there is some discussion about doing a townwide yard sale at that, which we're kind of putting the details together. And the last one is, is we discussed last meeting, putting some sort of EV or charging station somewhere in town, et cetera. It was a little bit high-level, but due to the recent rollouts of some major reimbursements and things of sorts, there is the potential to install an EV charging station for a minimal cost. And I don't want to put that out there yet until we get our quotes back, but I'll have further information at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. And we will remind you all about that April 23rd date at our next meeting, and it will be on the town website. Land Acquisition.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, Racial Equality Task Force.
Yes, the Racial Equality Task Force recently launched their website. It's diversefarmington.com. The website highlights everything from the task force is doing and will be used for the communication with the community. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 28th at 6:30 PM over Zoom.
Great. Now we'll be moving on to reports to the council chair and liaisons. We start with the council chair. First item I would like to mention, you might have seen a slightly different look up here on the council. We are no longer required to wear masks within the town hall. We have followed the president, the governor, the CDC, many other states, so we are not requiring masks in our town hall chambers either. It is still recommended, if you're feeling sick or you have any type of cold, to please wear your mask. Also a reminder, it's flu season. I think I'll personally still wear my mask when I go in crowded spots like the grocery store, at least until we're done with flu season. But for right now, I just wanted to give you the, explain why you're not seeing the masks. Also, as you've been hearing, we're in the midst of our budget season. We'll be discussing this 22-23 fiscal year. We are all looking, everyone up here on your council, the Board of Ed as well, all committed to a tax increase of no more than 3%. I am very confident that we'll be able to come in with those numbers when we're done with this week, so please follow along. We'll be televising. We're back here tomorrow night and the next night, and at least one other night probably. So keep up with what's going on, and it'll also be on the town website. And I'd also like to mention, we've all been watching the tragedy unfold live in Ukraine, and we would like to send our support to the brave citizens in Ukraine. They are doing an incredible job of standing up to the tyranny of the current Russian leadership. And for all of you who are out there, please seek out any of the local, national, international support groups. Here in Hartford, the Ukrainian National Home had just gotten through a round of collections. They're not collecting any items right now, because frankly, they were overwhelmed with the generosity of the public. They are, at the moment, collecting financial donations to help with the shipping costs. They expect in the near future to be doing another collecting. Also, Americare, who you can reach at americare.org, and saveth children.org are also making collections. So if you will keep an eye out, and if you can help them. We've gone through the last two years, a number of different challenges that we've been facing here in Farmington. I think we should remember just to be thankful for everything that we still have here in Farmington and Connecticut and in our country. With that, I will turn it over to Conservation and Land.
Nothing new to report.
Board of Education Liaison.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. The Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee, we're hoping to be putting up some new signs on the trails coming in May for our Wayfider signs. I think I mentioned that in the past. That's the big item at the moment. They will also be helping out with that cleanup on the 23rd. Economic Development Commission Liaison.
Yes, the EDC canceled their February meeting, and the next meeting is tomorrow, March 9th at 5:30 PM.
Great, thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Just two items of note in addition to the approvals that went on at the meeting. The commission is, the committee is looking at introducing ways to invite more people to join the Historic Commission in Farmington, and I invite everyone who has a historic home in the village to consider becoming a member of the Historic District. And the other item of note was that there have been a number of situations where businesses were doing additions and changes in the Historic District without talking to the commission, which is not allowable by law. So there is an effort to reach out to businesses to make sure that they speak with the Historic Commission before they make any changes to their businesses, and I wanted to extend that to the public.
Nothing to report.
You thought you were done at the front end there, huh?
Yeah.
Human Relations Commission.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Library Board.
Nothing to report.
Town Planning and Zoning Commission.
Town Planning and Zoning met February 23rd and, again, last evening, March 7th. Two sort of major items here. They approved, there was a site plan approval for the midpoint development, which is 1349, 1371 Farmington Avenue, over by the Big Bird Bridge and the McCallum Building. And they also forwarded a positive report for us on building on, or the property on the road, which we'll hear about later on this meeting. That's it.
Unionville Historic. Yeah, Unionville, the Unionville Historic District Commission met on March 3rd. The Assistant Town Planner Derek Daigle gave a presentation on how to conduct land records research, and he'll hold a more formal training in person with commission members who are interested in helping perform historic district title research, and the research utilizes the GIS search capabilities on the town website. And the next meeting is scheduled for April 7th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. UVIA?
Nothing to report.
WPCA?
Yes, Water Pollution Control authority will be holding their budget hearing tomorrow night at 7:00 PM.
Great. Any other liaisons that I've missed or anyone else asked? Seeing none. Moving on to item K, the report of the town manager.
There's no report tonight.
Okay. Item L, appointments.
Yes. Agenda item L1, I'd like to make the motion that Rich Hegley be appointed to the Board of Assessment Appeals for the balance of a six-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2024.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item L3, that Talia Estegliano be appointed to the Green Efforts Commission beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item L5, that Kayla Zimmerman be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for a balance of a ten-year term beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2022.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passed unanimously.
And Agenda item L6, I'd make the motion that Bob Hannan be appointed to the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Management Plan for an indefinite term. and Scenic Management Plan for an indefinite term.
Second. Motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move on to old business. We do have none. New business, item one.
To table that.
No, we're, there is no item none.
Yep.
No discussion tonight. Item two.
Yes, I'll make a motion for agenda item N2 to authorize the town manager to sign a tax abatement agreement with New Horizons Village located at 37 Bliss Memorial Road in Unionville.
Second. Second, Kathy.
As you can see in the note, currently, the town does not collect taxes from New Horizon Village based on an abatement that was approved in 1994 but was never formalized by a written agreement as required by town code. Recently, they were, needed to fill out some paperwork and our assessor wound up taxing New Horizons because he's a new assessor and it was the first time they had to fill out the paperwork. And when we reviewed the situation, we realized it was because the paperwork had never been filed and the, the new assessor didn't realize that. So now we're codifying it and we're going to get it on the books. And we've never collected taxes from them since 1984. So it was just because we never put it on the land records back in 1984 and there was a new form that they had to fill out for the first time with the new assessor. And that's why it got, we wound up taxing them.
How'd they react to getting that bill?
What?
How'd they react to getting a bill for the first time, huh?
Uh, not happy. So.
All right, any questions or comments?
Thank you for correcting that.
Okay, all in favor, have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passing unanimously.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for agenda item N3 to approve the attached general recommendations from the American Rescue Plan Act Ad-Hoc Committee.
Second. Motion to second. Kathy.
As you know, our ad hoc committee has been meeting. It was established on September 14, 2021 to make recommendations to the town council in regard of the ARPA funds. Just a brief history, Farmington is anticipated to receive 50% of the money was received in June 2021 and the remaining 50% will be received in June 2022. And funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024. Some history and some background, there's several ineligible fund uses. They include contributions to the rainy day funds, reserves or similar funds, deposits into pension funds and non-federal match or for other federal programs. In January of 2022, the Treasury released a final rule. The final rule takes place on April 1st, 2022 and it offers some broader flexibility and it's much more a simple program. And the final rule provides the following, and you have it in your note, but we can replace lost public sector revenue, respond to public economic impacts of the pandemic, provide premium pay to essential workers, invest in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. The ad hoc committee met several times and considered eligible uses for the funds as well as several requests received by the town manager's office. We talked about historically in Farmington, we've consistently focused on delivering the highest quality of town services while keeping taxes as low as possible. The philosophy has allowed us to maintain consistent fiscal health, kept the tax burden low for all residents and businesses and provided a competitive business climate that has attracted both residents and businesses to relocate. So at that, because of that philosophy, the ad hoc committee has concluded that it's, oh, I'm sorry, so a tax burden. So then on this last page, we have the recommendation from the ad hoc committee. And it's that the ad hoc committee is recommending to the town council that the ARPA funds be used to undergo large, long-term capital expenditures. The ad hoc committee took into consideration the town's successful fiscal philosophy, the latest U S Treasury final rule, which is broader and more flexible when making their recommendations. The long-term capital projects would produce the following results, positively impact all taxpayers rather than specific requestees, allow the town to fund projects that normally may not otherwise be afforded and make investments in projects that will have a, have a townwide, long-term benefit. Since the funds don't have to be obligated until 2024, December 2024, the committee is recommending that the first policy decision that the town council addresses, whether the entire ARPA funds should be used for one large capital expenditure. Two potential projects could be the renovation of the 1928 building or the fire department building renovations. If the town council decides to fund more than one capital project, the committee is recommending the following list for possible considerations and they came off of our seven-year capital plan. Some of the items could be paving of the rails to trails, school parking lot paving, stonehouse improvements, tungstus meet improvements, West Farms Mall pump station number two and a sidewalk project on Route 4. The committee also recognizes the importance of public participation and recommends that the town council solicit the public's input as necessary related to the ARPA funds. So really, this agenda item is basically saying that you're, the council is, this is the recommendation from the ad hoc committee and to be in basically a holding pattern, I think, right now and to see in the near future whether we want to spend the ARPA funds on a large project. And I think the recommendation is to see, first, let's see how the 1928 building starts coming, going out. And just so the council knows that at any time, you can spend the ARPA money. So it's not like this has to wait till next year's capital budget. If there's, if the council decides at some time that a large project is not what they want to do, they could go back and look at the capital project any time during the year and pick various projects. And so I think that summarizes kind of the overall recommendation and that's what's in writing. And that's, we have members of the ad hoc committee who would like to add to that.
Any additions, questions, comments?
So I think it was a week ago, Alicia Bowman had talked about the ventilation system and sort of putting in the framework, I guess, to cool the buildings inside. Is that something that could be considered as part of the funding under ARPA to pay for?
It definitely is eligible. The committee had not looked at the, the ARPA funds for our school projects because the school has their own ARPA funds. So we weren't looking at particular school projects, but it could be considered it's eligible for it. But the other thing on the ventilation projects, there is state reimbursement. There's a whole grant program that's just recently coming out, come out. So we're going to be looking into that in conjunction with the school system.
Okay, but it just didn't, okay, so in terms of like getting the most bang for your buck and making sure that you get all of the funding, it would be better to do the state funding underneath the Board of Ed budget for those projects?
The, the council in, in general, the ad hoc committee has not, did not look at Board of Education projects for using the ARPA money because the board has their own ARPA money. So they could pick whatever projects they want to do. And I think at this point in time, I think the school and I, we're going to look at the grant funding that's available through the reimbursement because I think there's other funds for that, for that particular project, the ventilation.
I'm just trying to circle back to see how we can get the, the vent and that kind of stuff. But I know you, you don't want to bond until next year.
Yep.
Like what's the quickest way that we can get those done for our schools and our students? Is the real question.
That's a council decision. You guys could do that at any time.
A couple of things. Your first question, as far as getting the most bang for the buck. And that's the same concept of some people had said, can you just move that, use that money for the high school? Well, anything that you spend the ARPA money on, you can't get whatever our funds from the state are. So if they're even, you know, it's 18.72% or 19 something now, we wouldn't get those funds from the state if we used our ARPA money.
Got it.
So we sort of lose those percentages. So using it for a project that isn't eligible for any state assistance would be getting the better bang for the buck because we can already get some type of discount going the other way. And of course, at the end of the day, we're still spending all the money. I think as far as what you're talking about with the air circulators, it sounded like from, and, well, we can ask them when they're back in, when we're on the Board of Education's end tomorrow night. But it sounded like the likelihood of getting those projects started this year wasn't really there, which is one of the reasons they said, you know, you can start bonding now, but we're really not going to be able to do those programs until next year just with supply lines and getting people to work. That's how it sounded, I think, when they were talking about capital. So I don't know that we could speed that up much. But we already are planning, I mean Kathy's proposal was to put all four of the schools on for bonding next year.
Right. Okay.
It's a, yeah, and the vent, from a ventilation standpoint, not from a cooling standpoint, which is what Rafina is referring to. But actually, that's a great question. I think we'd be interested in knowing, you know, has, has the Board of Ed spoke about what they're doing with their ARPA funds? Have they kind of set up a bullet point? Is, or in any of those projects considered on their end? That'd be, you know, good information to know, even from the council side so we're not duplicating efforts.
Are those ESER funds to be distinguished from the ARPA funds? Or it's still ARPA funds on the Board of Ed side?
I think, and Joe, Joe, you might be able to help us with that. I know there are ESER funds are, does the Board of Education get ESER and ARPA funds?
My understanding is what happened is that there's, their program was being run by the state or is being run by the State Department of Education. And my understanding is that the State Department of Education is actually combining to, so when they get their ARPA funds, it's actually ESER funds and ARPA funds combined together.
But the Board of Education is, is in charge of determining how that money is allocated, correct? Not, not the state?
Well, the state, the state has guidelines that they provide to them. And they, they do get the money from the state. Matter of fact, they got their first grant in last week of ARPA slash ESER, ESER money. And they'll decide how to appropriate that and how to spend it. And that was alluded to tonight in the presentation that was given, that their, you know, now again, their ESER money into their, into their budget.
Thank you. So I don't know Rafina, if you, at the next meeting, you can see, I know because you.
On my list.
All right. Fair enough.
Other question? Okay. No other questions. We have a motion to second. We would like to approve the recommendation of the ARPA funds ad hoc committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passing unanimously. We are approved.
Agenda item N4, I make a motion to set a public hearing on Monday, April 4th, 2022 at 7:05 P M. In the town hall council chambers and the town council's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second. Motion to second.
And just that you see the full budget schedule. And again, we're meeting tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon at 4 o'clock, Thursday at 4 o'clock and Saturday at 9:00 A M. And then we have some meetings next week if needed.
If needed. So we have a lot to say, but we'll go to next week. Yeah, this is, and just to clarify, tonight was the town manager's recommended budget. Once we have all our discussions with, and digging down each department and we basically put our stamp on it and we do any adjustments we feel are necessary to the budget, and then it becomes the town council's proposed budget. And that's what we have the public hearing for on April 4th. Any questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N5, I make a motion to accept the annual report of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Second. We have a motion to second. Kathy?
This is our 2020, 21 annual report. And this is the annual report that will be submitted at the annual town meeting for approval. I hope everyone takes a little bit of time to read through it. There's a ton of information and a great document for historical purposes.
It is a nice lot of information. And also, I think our picture in that one, is that the one of our Zoom meetings?
I don't know if we, is the Zoom one in here?
No, the Zoom one we did last year. This year's picture is from the Memorial Day Parade.
Oh, there you go. Even better. Okay, with our sash.
Yes.
Except for Joe.
I was sashless.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passing unanimously.
Make a motion for agenda item N6 to cancel the March 22nd, 2022 town council meeting.
Second. Have a motion and a second. I know we're going to have meetings all this week, but do you really want to cancel the 22nd?
Strongly.
Absolutely not.
Strongly endorse this proposal.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.